For those of you waiting, we're having a couple of technical difficulties, but it's now fixed. Okay. Good evening. We welcome you here at the regular meeting, the West Valley City Council. We note that we are at our anchor location and the public is able to attend in person, although we will continue the electronic option for both council members and the public. And we have some council members who are still participating electronically and some are here in person. We note that, one, two, three, four, five. We have six council members currently participating. And I believe the seventh one will come shortly. So we do have a quorum. With that then, we'll begin as we traditionally do with our Inside the City video series.
We do not know one promise these men made, one pledge they gave, one word they spoke. But we do know they summed up and perfected by one supreme act, the highest virtue of men and citizens. For love of country, they accepted death.
Patriotism is everything. If nothing else, we believe in our country, we believe in ratocracy. And we believe in a couple of things that really has been my North Star and is today. We believe in love of God, country, family, respect for women and authority. It's old school, but it's something that great generation taught us.
This day is a time for our nation to reflect, to remember and honor airmen, soldiers, sailors, Marines, coast guardmen, merchant mariners, and now guardians. And civilian members of our military who made the ultimate sacrifice defending and supporting our great country, its interests and its ideals.
Today, as you know, is the groundbreaking for it. I want to say just upfront, I wanted to thank Mayor Bigelow for all of the great work and effort and passion he's put into this. I've worked with him now for almost eight years. And this has been, I've got to say, of all the projects that he does have a passion for, this is probably the number one project that he has put his heart behind and is intent for. And we intend to carry it on into the future.
Since the beginning of World War I, almost 3,000 Utah veterans left to go to war and lost their lives in combat. Today, we gather with what I consider a singularly important event and purpose, the Guardians of Freedom Memorial. On becoming mayor, I had an opportunity to make a difference. The Veterans Hall Foundation was formed with three objectives for this project. First, to honor Utah's war dead by name. Second, to erect a monument for World War II. Third, to honor all veterans and record their individual military stories. The Veterans Hall Foundation is already working on the next two objectives for this memorial, hand in hand with West Valley City. We will continue to raise funds and make plans to honor the rest of our veterans. Thank you for your support and interest in this much-needed memorial to honor the men and women who guard our country and preserve their freedoms. Thank you. Thank you. Unquestionably a project near and dear to my heart. And so certainly to the council for your support as well, council members, and to the staff of West Valley City who helped this to happen and are keeping it moving forward. With that then, we will go to, we actually have to, we have it on our agenda. We usually don't do special recognitions. Those are for visiting elected officials, but we don't have any here tonight. Maybe we'll eventually get back to those. Approval of the minutes of May 25th to the council.
Move for approval of said minutes?
Second.
Properly before us. Hearing no further comments, then without objection, the minutes will be approved. And yes, we will continue the without objection form with, since we have some council members who are joining us electronically and the only way to do that is to hear them. With that then, there was no objection, so the voting was unanimous. Next, we go to our comment period. And we have, do we have anyone online?
Yes, sir, we do have one speaker online.
Okay, why don't we do that one first, if that's okay?
Yeah, Mike Rigdon, Mike, you should be able to unmute your microphone now.
Hello?
Hello.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, go ahead.
Okay. Again, my topic is on the 4100 South Highway. You know, interesting thing is popping up in the news everywhere I go. And Mayor, I'm directing these comments directly to you. I'm glad you nodded your head on that. Are Salt Lake City streets too fast? Now, I'm assuming that you and everybody else in the council there is aware of how large Salt Lake City, how large Salt Lake City is. The citizens feel that the streets are too fast. Yes, 20 is plenty. Slower is safer. The AAA Foundation of Traffic Safety Studied Citizens stated that when you reduce and drop speeds from 40 to 30 and then to 20, the survival rate at 20 miles per hour was 90% compared to 60% at 30 and just 20% at 40 miles per hour. Mayor, is 20 plenty? That's to you. We need to end culture. I have talked about this for six months. End culture. The speed limit on 4100 South Highway, the one that you all approved, is going to be posted at 40 miles an hour. Of course, you're going to have some debating about that and then you're going to have loss of lives. And then you're all going to look at each other and then everybody's going to retire and say, oh, what the heck, you know? Everybody's going to retire. We'll put the blame on who? Who do we put the blame on? Well, I put the blame on you, Mayor. I really do. I think you're aware that the speed limit is too fast. You have some, you have said to me several times, Mike, I drive this street and I agree with you. It's too fast. Yet, you know, we got posted 30 mile an hour right now. We've got construction people out there. And they're trying to work and be safe. And yet, there's no enforcement. But, but you, you told me there's a big plan. Okay, what is that big plan? Well, you know, it's kind of interesting. Mayor, this comment's to you. The citizenships, the citizens in Moab are complaining about the noise of all these people that are coming into their town, running up and down their streets at all odds of days and nights. Well, you know what? That isn't happening only in Moab. It's actually happening in the second largest city in Utah, which you are the mayor of. Where's that big plan? I want to see your big plan. You know what, you know what, Mayor? I think the big plan is that you need to think about, drive like your kids live here. Now, Mayor, do your kids live in West Valley City? That's my question to you. And how are you going to protect those kids? Every one of you council people have got to answer this question to yourself. And especially in between this 4100 South Highway, which I think maybe, Mayor, you need to suggest a name of the highway so that citizens can put in the name. Because it's certainly going to be too fast, it's not going to be safe. The part that I'm concerned with is between 4200 West and 5400 West. It's narrow, it's tight, there's no easement. You've got great big walls. I can't walk safely down that street without knowing that somebody's going to go by me going 80 miles an hour. Mayor, end culture. That's what I'm trying to tell you, Mayor. End culture here. It needs to be done.
Thank you. Next, we have Jim Vesok.
Good evening, Mayor. I don't have to worry about internet tonight. I admire passion, everybody knows I admire passion. And Mayor, I think you're doing a great job. We had the same issues on 4735 with the speed. I personally don't know what the fix is. It isn't going to be a short-term, quick fix. But I do admire the passion of Mr. Rigdon. In the study meeting, you guys talked about the recycling. And it reminded me of something that we did a couple of years ago. City has all their blue cans lined up out there. And so we walked out there and looked in them. They were all contaminated by the rules. Come to find out, by doing a little checking, they don't even, recycle truck doesn't even pick them up. The trash truck picks them up because they know they're contaminated. Why do we have all those blue cans out there? You know, we're asking our citizens to, to do it, to recycle, to do all this stuff. Something to look at, maybe just getting rid of it like some of the other cities. You know, it's, they want aluminum cans, they want, you know, you can't even put a dirty milk carton in there. They want it washed and crushed, you know? And the average person doesn't understand, they can't throw their pizza box in there or their other fast food, didn't want to name any names, containers in there. They think all styrofoam is good from your TV set and all that's, they don't understand it. Every time the loader loads it up, it contaminates the load more trash. Something to think about as you're considering the recycle program. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Next, Mike Markham.
Okay, thanks, gang. Just a couple of quick things. First thing I want to do is thank Russ Willerson for a career with, with West Valley City. He's done a great job with the city. He's always been the one to return my text messages or my emails. He's even been known to call me when I've been home. When I've had a question with the council, he'll call me at home. He's always showed me the utmost respect by keeping in touch with me, doing the follow-up. So I just want to thank him for, for all of his hard work with the city. Appreciate everything he's done. Couple of just quick questions I want to show, throw at you. I drove past the new Mountain America that's over here that we're building and they're putting up vinyl fence posts. Why wouldn't we have asked them to put up a concrete wall with, like we've been using other places in the city, instead of a cheesy white vinyl fence? You know, it's a eyesore. Something else I want to throw at you, for the police department, the fire department, we have a new uniform house in the valley or in the city limits, Skaggs Uniform on Redwood Road in the old Callister's Building. Maybe we could start directing some business to them. I don't think we do much of it right now, but if we could, if we could go after them. Another thing that I wanted to bring up in the council, in the study meeting, y'all talked about Superior Water and you were all worried about putting in the ordinance, the recycling end of things. You know, I think every business, when they open up, needs to open up with a conditional use permit. Because when they present their, their business plan to us, it shows some landscaping on it. Or a repair shop opens up as a repair shop. And if they don't maintain their landscaping, we continue to give them their business license. Even that's not, that's not what we continue to do. You know, a repair shop turns into a repair shop slash wrecking yard. We've had those in the city. If a business opens up as something, that's what it needs to be. And if they don't maintain their landscaping, they don't get their business license renewed. If I go to a business in West Valley and they've got crappy landscaping they're not taking care of, I don't shop there. I want to shop with people that are interested in West Valley City. I don't want to shop with people that come here on the low-end side of things, think we don't care and, and we just let them keep continuing their business. So just one other thing I'd like to bring up there. Mayor, you're very honorable in your veterans hall over there. But something that I'd like to bring up that is kind of very dear to my heart is the disabled veterans. Let's honor the ones that have come home. Now, maybe by their own choice, they've come home from military service with drug or alcohol problems. But if you haven't been there, you don't know what you go through sometimes. We've got a perfect piece of property over there just straight north of the Maverick Center that just seems to keep sitting there doing nothing except collecting weeds. There's a bus stop or a train station right there. Why can't we come in with something like tiny houses for, for vets? You know, something with a twin, big enough for a twin bed, a bathroom. The front part could be a kitchen dinette and a lounging area. I've seen them on TV, I've seen them where these other cities are building them. Salt Lake City is, is coming, trying to put something together. They won't announce where the property is going to be for fear of the uproar of, of people. But that piece of property that is in West Valley City, you know, there's, there's not a lot of residential around it with Maverick Center on one side. You got a few hotels back against the freeway. Got our parking lot across the street from it. I think we need to look at the veterans that have come home messed up. And it's not their choice, they come home messed up in most cases. There's a lot of PTSD, there's a lot of other stuff that happens that you see when you're put into these situations that you have no choice to. Now granted, maybe this is terrible, the guys that chose to do drugs. Nobody forces anybody to do drugs, but you just got to do it a couple of times and you're messed up. So if we could look at something like that in the city, some tiny houses, I think would be great. Thanks.
Thank you, and I believe that's everyone. All right. Our city manager, any comments?
No comments, thanks, Mayor.
Council members? I do have a comment on the speed limit on 4100 South. And I've already had this discussion with Wayne. Certainly, I think it ought to be lower, but in our form of government, there are days I wish I had this say and that I could make all the changes by myself. But the wisdom of those who organize government, make it so that you can't be unilateral. And so you have an organization of elected officials at one form or another to make those decisions as a group, to make sure that everyone's voice is heard. So although there are days I wish I could do it, I'm glad for this form of government, that we do it as a group or we don't do it as a group, or at least by a majority. Thought I would just share that. Okay. With that then.
Mayor, I just.
Yes, go ahead, Tom.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I, I think my Mickham, he brought it up, very good point about the disabled veteran. And I think very practical. So maybe put that into practice in the future if we can. That's all.
Okay, thank you. There are a number of items that we're going to consider in moving forward with that project. Not only that, but MIAPOW, Medal of Honor winners. There are numerous suggestions on things that we could do to honor individuals in a monument situation. As far as housing, probably the vehicle of the Veterans Hall Foundation is not the proper vehicle. But I have had those conversations at different times with people here at the city. I'm currently spearheading an effort to talk about affordable housing, of which smaller homes is one. But there are so many factors involved with that. And as I met with the chamber this morning to discuss it, it is not a simple answer. There are many, many factors involved. And we're trying to come to some solutions and take those solutions to the state legislature to see if they'd be willing to implement some of those ideas. So is it an idea? Yes. Can we put it into practice? Maybe. It depends on numerous factors about typically a developer willing to build them. And typically, the city doesn't build a lot of homes or apartments, although we do encourage it through select practices. So those are things that could be considered. Okay. With that then, let's go to our first public hearing tonight. We will take a look at ordinance 21-28. This is our quarterly opening of the city budget. This is for our budget of this year, that is the 2020-2021 fiscal year ending June 30th. By state law, if we receive additional funds that we want to spend, like grants, or if expenditures arise that we need to spend money for that were not in our budget, we need to make a public hearing, or hold a public hearing and then make those adjustments within the budget. That is a requirement that we have to meet. Rather than doing that every week or whatever, we talk about many of those issues during the year, but we actually put them into our budget pretty well once a quarter, except for very unusual circumstances. And that is what we're doing tonight. The items contained in the budget is, or are, items of grants that we've now received. They are carryforwards from previous budgets or items that were planned in a different time period. They are additional expenditures for things that were not necessarily available at the time, the information to include them in the budget. For example, we have expenditures that occur when something breaks down in the city that was unplanned and we need to take money out of our fund balance to pay for that. That's happened at the fitness center over the years, that's happened at the golf course. It, we've even had issues related to our fire department where we've had to do those and make expenditures that were not planned. But that is an ongoing budget for our city. And so tonight, we will evaluate those. There is a list of those, they are fairly routine. There's not anything extremely unusual in those. And it's actually a little shorter than some of the other quarters. But with that introduction, anything, any other comments before I open it to public comment? Not hearing any? Then we will open the public comment portion of this and invite anyone from the public who would like to address this issue. Is there anyone online?
No, sir.
No one online, is there anyone here? Yes, sir, come forward.
You knew I was going to say something. I understand about opening up the, the grants from the holdovers and all that stuff. Breakdowns. Why can't there be in-park and wrecks? They know that systems only last 10 years. And if they're on the 15-year plan, why haven't they been putting a little bit of money aside for it? It, they, I'm just using that example, it's not on, on the budget. We need vehicles. You know, we're going to rotate so many vehicles a year in and out of the fleet. Those should all be up, up front and not, you know, put in all these openings. I understand the way that the accounting works for the grants. You get a million dollar grant, they only spend 100,000, goes into the, the fund, comes in and out. I, I understand all that. It's the extra stuff that should have been in the budget, should have been foreseen. You know, systems are not going to allow, we rotate our cars through the, we know they're not going to allow. Other areas need to do the same thing and come out a little bit better planning. That, that's what I, I want to see with the budgets. I understand emergencies like the COVID, stuff like, that was something unforeseen. Maintenance, repairs, cars, those are all foreseen expenses. That, that should be put in the initial budgets. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else? Not seeing anyone else, we'll close the public comment period or portion of this meeting and come back to the council.
I, I move forward. Yeah, I move forward, the ordinance 21-28.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's properly before us, any further comments? Hearing none, then to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Fiddy Samanu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye. Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we have another public hearing. This one is on application ZT-3-2021 filed by the city. We're doing a zone text change in our regulations relating to lodging facilities. Particularly, this change would say that having a lodging facility, a hotel motel type of thing, is intended to provide short-term lodging for business and leisure travelers. And so if someone comes in and reserves a majority of the rooms for more than 30 days, changes that nature and it becomes, or could become essentially, an apartment building, which are handled under a different part of our budget and have different requirements. So to just clarify that, we are making sure that they will stay separate and be handled separately in, with, by the city. So that's the introduction. Any comments before I open the? So that's the introduction. Any comments before I open the public hearing on it? Not hearing any, then we will open the public comment period. Is there anyone online to speak to this?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Anyone here? Seeing none, then we will close the public comment. We will come back to the council.
Mayor, I'd move for approval of ordinance 21-29.
Second.
Properly before us, hearing no further comments, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Fiti Samanu?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Now we have our third public hearing. This is on application ZT, excuse me, Z, I will get it yet, GPZ dash four dash 2021 filed by West Valley City. This is requesting amendment to our general plan resort rezoning certain properties in our city. With this, it'll be, we'll use ordinance 21-30 from changing designations to large lot residential or neighborhood, neighborhood commercial for properties across the city. And then ordinance 21-31 to change the zoning map for some from to agriculture or C1. Anyway, there's some changes there. There are only a few of these. I think we had a oh boy, how many were there? There were half a dozen properties that we were doing this on. I don't have it right up in front of me. Mr. Pyle, how many were there?
I can't remember the exact number, but you're pretty close, Mayor.
Okay. So this is affecting a very few, but it is done to ensure that the city can properly regulate the construction and use of properties throughout in the city. With that introduction then, if there's no further comments, then we will go to the public comment portion. Do we have anyone online?
No, sir.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak to this? Seeing none, we will close the public comment period on this application and bring it back to the council to consider the two ordinances.
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment that since this was initiated, one of the properties in question, the owner entered into a development agreement with us, which makes the rezoning on that property unnecessary. And that is why we have two options today for each of these ordinances. And with that, I would move for approval of ordinance 21-30, option two.
Second.
Properly before us. Thank you for that clarification. And hearing no further comments, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Fiti Samanu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Move for approval of ordinance 21-31, option two.
Second.
Properly before us, hearing no further comments, to our city recorder.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Fiti Samanu?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we have our consent agenda. There are three items on there. Resolution 21-85, a delay agreement. These are typical in an area, and this is a common one for delaying improvements. Because it's not built up enough to do all the improvements, it's better to do them all at once. We did have it happen where someone jumped the gun. It wasn't anyone in the city, but at the state level. And so they were off by a few feet. So we had to make adjustments to try and correct that. Anyway, this is a simple delay agreement. We'll take care of the actual improvements at a later date when others are involved. Then resolution 21-86 and 21-87 are warranty deeds, easements and temporary construction easements on property on 2700 West as a part of that project that is currently occurring there. Fairly routine, and we have these off and on over a period of time. So with that introduction, for those items to the council.
Move for approval of the three items on the consent agenda.
Second.
Properly before us, hearing no further comments, to our city recorder.
Councilman Fiti Samanu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. There is no need for a closed session. That can finishes our regular council meeting agenda. However, we do have three short meetings to approve budgets for our redevelopment agency, housing authority and building authority. And so we'll be doing those, or start on those as soon as we adjourn. Any further comments from the committee? We would announce that we will continue routinely now having this anchor location, or if you will, open to the public here at the city offices for our council meetings from now on, unless something drastic against happens. So there's always that possibility. No one foresaw the pandemic that would occur. But we think we're safe for quite a while now. Although we will have the electronic option. With that then, let's close this meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Without objection, we will stand adjourned. Hearing no objection, that's unanimous.
I call to order the regular meeting of the redevelopment agency. Note that we've had an opening ceremony and all are present except Mr. Norfelt. We have our minutes of May 18th, 2021. Is there any discussion or motion on those minutes?
I'd move for approval of the minutes.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any objection to the minutes? Hearing none, we will move for the minutes to be approved. Do we have a report from the chief executive officer, Mr. Pyle?
No, sir, ma'am, sorry, thank you.
That's okay. Our first order of business is a public hearing for the budget opening. Mr. Pyle, would you like to address that?
Yes, thank you, ma'am. Just as in the previous meeting where we did a budget opening for the regular city or the regular budget, including the general fund, the other entities of the city that the council stands as a board for, including the RDA, the housing authority and the building authority also have to do that on a, on a quarterly basis, and this is reflecting that action.
And is the main item on there, the increase in increment payments?
I'm sorry, I couldn't.
The main opening on there is the increased payments?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay. All right. Do we have anybody on? Well, first off, we'll open the public hearing. And do we have anybody online to address this?
No, ma'am.
And anybody in the audience? Okay, we will close the open meeting and ask if the council has any discussion or motion on this.
I oh, I don't have that number, it may, but I, I will move forward for approval. Is that resolution? What number can?
2105.
2105.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. We'll turn the time over to Mrs., Ms. Kammack for a roll call.
Mr. Fiti Samanu?
Aye.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Mr. Hune?
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Lang?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Our next order of business is in public input for the 2020-21-22 budget. Mr. Pyle, is there any differences on there?
No, ma'am. The same as was presented back in May and adopted as the tentative.
Okay, thank you. We now open the public hearing for the budget 21-22. Do we have anybody online?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Anybody in the audience? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for discussion or a vote.
Motion to approve resolution 21-06.
Second.
Thank you. With a motion and a second, we'll turn the time over to Ms. Kammack for the vote.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Hune?
Aye.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Mr. Fiti Samanu?
Aye.
And Chairwoman Lang?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We are finished. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. Hearing no objection, we are adjourned.
Call to order on housing authority meeting tonight and the opening ceremony we done at earlier, the irregular meeting. We have all council members here tonight, except for the except for the council member Lot Norfelt. Okay, we have approval of minutes of May 4th, 2021. So it's, we'll turn over to the council member for the motion and also for the second.
I would move for approval of the minutes of May 2, May 4th, 2021.
Second.
So all those in the favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Good, thank you. And any, any opposed, say no. So none, this, this motion passes unanimously. Okay, let's go over to the two items we have here tonight is the public hearings. A and B, so I will turn over to, this is the budgets for 2020 and 2021. And I believe it's Mayor Ron Bigelow, he elaborated very clearly at length for this one already, but I will turn over to Mr. Pyle, is any things that you want to make a comment on this one?
No, sir. I don't need to add any further to the item. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you, our city manager, and I will turn this one over to the public hearing. If anyone's wants to come up to speak for this motion, actually, resolution 21-02. And we'll turn over to their time. We have any, anyone that wants to do that in in front of you right now, it's a chamber right there, or any electronically, is Nico?
No, sir, there is no one here to speak and no one electronically.
Okay, all right, and I will close the public hearing with the city council, to the city council, and we'll have the motion or discussion for this resolution 21-02.
Motion to approve resolution 21-02.
Second.
So we have a motion, we have a second, so we'll turn over to Nico Kama for the call.
Mr. Fiti Samanu?
Aye.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
And Chairman Hune?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. I don't have a B right here, it's, we also, we heard that from previous meetings earlier. Is any comment, Mr. Pyle, you want to make any comment here or no?
Thank you, sir. The only comment I would make is the budget's about the same, but there's a little increase in vouchers, at least projected for the upcoming year.
Okay, thank you so much for your explanation. Now I will turn over to the public, and we have a public hearing, a resolution 21-03. I'll open that to the public here, and anyone wants to do that, come up to speak or to do that electronically, or come up to the microphone right there and can speak up.
Doesn't look like we have anyone electronically or in person, sir.
Okay, thank you. So none, so I will turn council and make any, any discussion or motion for this resolution 21-03.
Motion to approve resolution 21-03.
Second.
Okay, I'm motioning for a second, and we'll turn over to the recorder, Nico Kama.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Fiti Samanu?
Aye.
And Chairman Hune?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you. So one last motion is
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, so all favorites in this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, we adjourn. Thank you.
The meeting of the municipal building authority is now called to order. And we'll note that we've had an opening ceremony and that member Norfelt is not present at this point. First order of business is the approval of the minutes for the last meeting on May 4th, 2021.
Mr. Chair, move for approval of the minutes.
Second.
Okay. If any are opposed to accepting that approval, please make it known. And in the absence of opposition, that passes and we will approve those minutes. Is there any report from Mr. Pyle? No, sir, thank you. Thank you. Just one public hearing that is now open in terms of accepting input on the fiscal year 2021 to 2022 budget. Is there anything that you'd like to add in introduction to that, Mr. Pyle? No, sir. No change from the May tentative budget. Thank you. Is there anyone online who would like to speak to this?
No, sir.
And anyone in the audience who'd like to speak? Thank you. With that, I will close the public comment section on this item and bring it back to the authority to consider resolution 21-02.
Motion to approve resolution 21-02.
Second.
Thank you, and I'll turn it to our recorder for the vote.
Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Mr. Hune?
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen? Mr. Christensen? Chairman Fiti Samanu?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, and with no other business items there, I'll entertain one last motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Any opposition to adjourning? Then we are adjourned.